And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madison?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Glover?
Here.
Egley?
Here.
You have before you the approval of September 5th, regular council meeting minutes. Questions, additions, corrections. Make a motion to approve Ezra.
Second.
My second.
Roll call.
Egley? Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Martin?
I'm standing.
Beverly?
Yes.
You have before you the bills. Any questions?
I have a couple. Geo-technical study, CT consultants. I probably don't know who that is, but where's that at?
That was at the old pool house. That was soil sampling, geo-testing for the foundation for like the slide, the foundation for the pool house.
How about NAPA for a $308 battery?
The battery was probably 60 bucks. I don't, I don't know what everything was.
Okay.
That was all our stuff or not?
More stuff on top of this.
It just doesn't print out.
Okay.
I have one. Volleyball court wiring for those was, we buy it in bare good work or how does that work out?
Yes. About four rolls of brick material to wire from that.
On the Choice One Engineering, is that the contract that we're supposed to be engaging in this evening?
Yeah. Yes.
So how are we paying a bill on a contract we haven't signed or approved, I guess?
Who missed it?
What's that?
I said I missed it.
Still can't do it.
We don't have to send it out.
Okay.
Why do they have to pass it as an emergency?
Probably because it's already in the process.
Like we didn't know this was coming?
I said I made a mistake.
No, 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 I'm not talking about that part of it. I'm talking about why it's an emergency. Everything we do anymore is an emergency. We don't, not doing any planning, I guess, it's just, everything we pass is an emergency. We don't give time for anybody to contest us or anything. And people stop you on the street and go, what are you trying to sneak through here? Not me. But yes, Taylor, we do have the cart before the horse on that. It should be taken out of the bills.
And then I guess a question on the GeoTech study. Is there a reason that we're paying that direct and that wasn't ran through Six Bow?
It was cheaper for us to have them come and do it. This was done months ago, maybe in March.
Yeah, and when they had the minutes, they said for their person, they were going to get us, going to take a lot longer till they could get them on site. And the cost was substantially higher going there in Six Bow. And Cory ended up dealing with a couple of contractors and they were a lot cheaper and could be there within like a week. So we went that route.
Okay.
Cory went that route.
Any other questions?
Can we take, take that out if he pays?
And I guess another question for you, Cheryl. So you mentioned before the meeting that this stuff was, there's, voices doubled up on this.
Yeah, if you look at the date, you can see the ones on the pitch were.
Do we need to also redline those off before approving them, so on approving them, pay twice for formality?
I don't think it matters, that's it.
What's that?
Instead of, this is the whole one, instead of just from, for today that you keep, do we need to redline all the ones from last time? It's already approved.
So basically we would be approving it, voices twice. To be, I mean, the transaction day would be the one thing you kind of say.
It would be the, technically, I guess, I mean, what you're really looking at is if somebody ever looks at the minutes in the books and says, well, you approved all of those again today. So it should be, yeah, there should be some way of delineating between the stuff that was already approved and the stuff that was being approved today. How that's done, I'm not certain from a software standpoint or a, like you said.
I could do another mess.
Go off of it, yeah, off of the date or something.
We can do that.
And question on the lift they purchased, is that, where's that coming out? Where's that money coming from?
That came out of the street capital.
Street, so that was a budget item this year?
Not technically this year, no. I think it was 110,000 setting in capital. That was originally going to go towards purchasing new trucks, but since we went into the enterprise program, it saved us a bunch of money rather than having to write a check for 90,000 or 100,000 per truck. So it came out of the capital.
But you're also carrying dollars in there for a street swoop or two, right?
That's refuse.
That's coming out of refuse?
Yeah, I think it's about 100,000 sitting there.
Is there, I see Six Bow is 3,200, is that, I guess, is there additional charges to re, to rebid?
Yes, 8,500.
For what? I guess what's their, that seems high to redraft some documents. Are they changing engineering?
A little bit, yeah, like ceilings in the building, the fencing. You know, the verbiage probably for the parking lot to where that's going to be like an additional for the parking. Removal of a couple big shade umbrellas, so changing up the drawings and specs.
Okay. That seems high, in my opinion, but for rework, I don't know if there's any negotiation there. Any other questions?
Are we going to pull anything out?
I think we have to pull out Choice One.
Okay. I'm sure we'll redline the, the ones that are even pre-approved from the last meeting. Now, that's the, I make a motion to approve the bills.
What all ones are you saying to take out?
All the ones that were on the last report from the last meeting we had that were already pre-approved and being paid that are also on this report.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Madison?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Okay, morgues and commissions, you have in your packet, the nuisance board met September the 6th. Any questions on that? Ron and I and Cory and Bruce were there, Mike. Things are starting to move again.
It's down there today on the beach, it's down.
Oh, is it? I haven't been. Okay.
It's down.
Good. It's straight now.
It's down.
So, any questions on that? Council committee reports, anybody?
We have a finance committee meeting, we had one on September 6th, I still have to type them up in a minute, but we met, we discussed EMS levy, the pool levy and insurance that was coming up for next year. First we talked about was EMS levy, 5 mil levy that's going to be going out there. I know you guys are going to be busy advertising for that and what Plan A, Plan B and was for if it did or did not pass, what we're looking into for the future. We talked about the pool levy and how, not pool levy, pool payments and the pool splash pad project. And we're sure we'll plan on paying for that. And she was, we initially budgeted around 600,000, but I know we had spent stuff on moving, some of it was in engineering, some of it was relocating volleyball courts and stuff like that. And so there's about 200, 250,000 left in there. And then we got lucky and got reimbursed for some projects we had already paid out of pocket. I think that was right around 795,000. And then, of course, I know Hicksville Community Fund's been working hard on donations and I'm not sure where they're at, but I know they had at one time said that they were going to donate 800,000. And then Cheryl had said for many, many years, we've set aside 500 to 700,000 a year in the capital improvements. But for the next few years, we don't have any earmark for it. So that could also go towards capital improvement of a new pool, pool house. So that's kind of where she's looking at getting the funding for it, not including getting a loan from the bank for the balance and then making extra payments for it so they get it paid off sooner. So we talked about that and then insurance choices, there's 18 people that take insurance and if there's anything from level one through nine, normally, normally we do five to nine. And there's talk about changing that up to maybe do different numbers. So just kind of over all this stuff and what's going to cost the village more and I'll admit it's at the next meeting.
Okay. Couple of questions, I guess. So on the capital improvements, is that one thing we haven't discussed much about, where we put a plan in is the projects for the industrial drive utility expansion. I think that's something we probably need to make sure that we're also accounting for so we're not earmarking all of our annual capital improvements. Obviously we've got ongoing maintenance that needs to be done.
And designs have new listation.
Correct. Just, I guess, a comment on that stuff. Then I've heard, I guess, just more of a question, I've heard that we have several CDs coming up, so their mature date, maturing date. Is that, has that been discussed, what we're doing with those dollars?
We talked about rolling them over, but that's been a few months ago, a lot of them have already matured, I believe. Couple of months back. Yeah.
So you did roll them over?
Uh huh.
Yeah, they're starting to go up now again.
Yeah.
CDs. I'm guessing.
It was back in June or July, I remember I, I didn't know there's dollars there also per pool potentially. But it just got rolled over, then, I don't know what the terms are on this.
Okay, any questions for Eric, committee? All the budgets are around, I'm guessing, Brian, me and yours, from the department heads, Noel?
PD does theirs then. Pearson's ready?
Well, I'm going to deal with those two, but yes.
Maurice is ready.
Adrian Park.
Yeah, so. Description of capital projects or big purchases.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Any, any other council committee reports? Administrator report?
I don't really have much, just a reminder that at the recycle lot, we will no longer be taking grass at the end of, after the end of this month. So starting October 1st, we won't be taking any, any grass down to recycle lot.
There a reason for that?
We don't have a place to take it. Our composter person that we've been using probably for quite a few years, that gentleman passed away a while back and his children had taken it over. And I don't think they live around here. So they were on the fence with continuing with us, but we are under like yearly contract with them. And our contract ends the end of this month and they let me know about 30 days ago, they would not be interested in doing this any longer. We do have an outlet, two different outlets to take leaves, but we don't have anything for grass. Nobody wants to take the grass.
Speaking of leaves, I did pick up one of these, there's no times or when are you going to be got?
I'm not really sure when we'll start with leaves, once it starts, like start falling hot and heavy, then we'll, we'll hit it. We'll kind of have a timeframe when we'll go to.
Any idea how long it'll last?
We'll probably go into, you know, Thanksgiving or right around the first of December.
Depending on how they fall.
Yep.
It's good.
Hopefully they fall quick.
Will this map go out to, as in more bills or anything like that?
I can talk to Dawn about it, it is up on the website, so it's active on the village website. Shows the different sectors of town and what the pickup days would be. It shows, you know, it'd be four days, next allows us a day for weather. So if we get Monday, Tuesday, and then it rains Wednesday, then we'll be out Thursday, Friday. But if it doesn't rain or we don't have bad weather, then Friday will be kind of like a general pickup. We'll, we'll kind of scour the entire town, but every other day we'll be in those sectors.
Do you want to, I guess, just for council purposes, do you want to kind of explain the process on that?
On the leaf pickup?
Yeah, just so, I, I get a lot of questions and stuff from people watching, just to explain that you're breaking it up into quadrants.
Yeah, normally the guys would set out and they might start on the north side of town and say they get the north side of town done, then head to the south side that day. And then, I mean, they're just all over town. And after looking at numbers for fuel and man hours, I think it would be, it would be better for the village as a whole to, to do it in sectors. It's not saying that if, on the green, the northwest here, if it was all done by 2 o'clock on Monday, there's no reason why they wouldn't start on the Tuesday route. It's just, I think it would, I think it would just be more beneficial to everybody if we do it in sectors rather than, like right now, the guys will call on the radio, hey, there's a pile over here on Oak Street. Oh, I got one here on West High Street. Just a lot of time moving around and, and reassembling and just rendezvousing. I mean, they spend a lot of time raking, raking the leaves back up into the piles. So that and it's, it's pretty much everybody in the village, all the utility departments, all our utility workers are pretty much on leaves between raking, sucking up the leaves and driving the trucks. And this will like free up a couple of guys every day so we don't have all of our utility workers all day long for a month or so just doing leaves.
So everybody can get on the website, find the map and figure out which sector they're in?
Yep, absolutely. It's pretty much, it's, it's the same map as what Werler's uses. I'm not saying that we're coming to your part of town when Werler's comes, but yeah, it's, it's broke up the same way as what Werler's is.
You mentioned if they finish Monday early, they would move on to Tuesdays?
Yeah.
But will they circle back around? Because I know some people may be, you know, going out there Monday night.
Sure.
Okay.
But odds are when we first start, they'll be, you know, they'll work all day Monday, they may not even get everybody done like in the northwest sector on Monday. So they'll have a lot of catch up to do. It'll be hectic for a little while. We were going to break it up north side, south side, but that's quite a bit to try to get accomplished. I think they can get these quadrants done in one day. You know, they can do the northwest quadrant in a day, the northeast quadrant in a day. Then, you know, we would have people even call up to the office and say, hey, I just put out some leaves 15 minutes ago, where you guys at? We'll, we'll get to you, you know, we'll get to you. But this year will kind of give them a better idea of when we're going to be there so they can kind of pre-plan when they want to get their leaves off to the curb.
Okay, any other questions? Solicitors report, Troy?
Resolution 2023 dash 23, first reading by caption only. A resolution of the bill to Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Choice One Engineering, provide professional engineering services for the Cornelia Rock Street wireline replacement and declare an emergency.
Make a motion to suspend rules.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
So that's, the mic gone, that's not enough to suspend the rules.
Okay.
That's what I had.
Questions for Troy? Department heads, police chief?
The only thing I got is we signed a lease agreement for Enterprise to purchase a 2024 Dodge Durango. It'll be built by a statewide board for statewide emergencies services, whatever they call down there. So, I think it's 8,900 that was out of pocket and we have to pay for the aftermarket stuff, so.
And that'll be the first vehicle on the lease program?
Yeah. Yeah, they were, the Durangos were actually cheaper than, you know, the vehicle's supposed to be a $4,000 or a $100,000 discount one.
And is that replacing something?
Exactly, yeah, the Taurus.
When are you expected to get it? Do they know?
Don't know. I'm assuming not until after the first year, so.
And we're just, so basically as you lease new vehicles, you're just going to sell or trade against or how's that, what's your process on that?
Depending on what they're going to go through the Taurus, if not, we'll sell it outright through gut deals, so.
Anything else, chief? Any other questions for Chief Denny? Thank you. Bruce, fire and EMS chief?
I do have the budget done, 10 days, so I give it to Tony and Charlie. We're going to have a meeting Monday at 5:30 to go over it and then we'll get it to the finance committee after the fact. So I want them look at it, see if they're okay or whatever. Right now, I can tell you we're just about $50,000 short, oh, I'm sorry, we're going to be over $50,000, so. And that's something that, just the way the figures came out. That's a 5% increase, I'll let you know right away, that's 5%, 5% increase over last year, so I don't think that's too bad really myself. Monday night, next Monday night, we're going to, for our training meeting, we're going to go around knocking on everybody's door and have the fires out, we're going to have the fire department EMS up there doing it, so. We'll get it, get it out, let people look at it.
So I guess what's the, what's the message you guys are going to be telling people that this levy is for?
Well, I've been pulled for wages and that's pretty much, pretty much where it's going to be dictated to. And unfortunately, wage is a wage, we can't, we can't get around it. It's a, it's a necessary evil and that's what we have to live with. If not, we'll have to look at cutting times, maybe runtime, hour time for people. We won't be able to respond if we don't get what we need.
So when you say pretty much wages, I guess, obviously I'm not looking at the numbers and you're still going through budget stuff, but based on that 5 mil levy, that was 200 and?
248,000 somewhere.
About 248,000, so will all of that be used for wages?
Right now, not, I shouldn't say all wages, it'll be pretty much for the wages because right now I am four paid, paid periods for my fire department side. And as I talked to Cheryl this afternoon, we're pretty close of being out of money on that. So it's going to have to go both ways, is what it is.
So if you're, with this, so with this budget cut, obviously if you're looking at this year's budget and you're short and we're at the end of Q3 basically, are you accounting for a whole nother quarter of wages in this budget?
Knock on wood, the fire department's been very quiet, so I'm not pulling much wage out of the fire department. But if we have two, three good fires, that's going to take a pretty good hit. So I, that I can't tell you on the quarter. Main reason for this funding is EMT wages, correct? To, to be, you know, their EMTs go back out, so we don't have to call Sherwood. How many times have we called Sherwood lately? One time, last Saturday, I think it was. And everybody was out of town, they were doing their family things, so it is what it is on that. Yep. We're, we'll put most of this wage, I'm hoping to be able to hire some people. At present rate, we're, we're paying and maybe put on two more. I mean, that's. Are there two, two out, out there that are looking? I mean, that's been our problem, is finding. I got one that's in class right now. So I can't tell you till the end of the year where we stand, it's, it's a variable. One week we have 14 rescue runs and last week I think we had five or six. And that's, I mean, you know, it's, it comes and goes, well, it depends who wants to be sent, I guess.
So if this budget gets pushed through, it gets not pushed through, but approved and you're, if you're $50,000 over your current budget.
Correct.
And this levy passes, so you're $48,000 or roughly $50,000 is covered with that, what is that extra $200,000 to get used for?
Wages of EMS. I mean, we're, we're going to be short on EMS wages also, so, I mean, that's, that's the reason why.
So the, the $48,000 doesn't include EMS, the $48,000 overage in the, the budget you just handed them doesn't include?
No, no, that's, that's a 5% increase on, on gas, insurance and everything else that goes along. I just paid, I just paid $1,400 today for two front tires for the 504. Belt broke, 1,400 bucks for two of them. So that's an unexpected expense that I had this morning walking into. So to say I, I'm going to spend this much the rest of the year, I have no idea. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't pin it down. It's 504. What's that? What's 504? Uh, our first line pumper out the door. 700 bucks a piece for steering tires? 634, then I had all this other stuff on top of it, yeah. That's state pricing from Best One in, in Bryan. Wow. Yeah. Yeah. Are they, are they special tires like, like they run on police cars? They're just regular tires? Bridge dome, the big ones, I mean, you know, they're, they're big tires.
That truck's 20 years old, right?
The truck's 21 years old.
And it's original tires.
And that's the original tires that run. Yeah. So we're doing pretty good, that, them tires didn't cost us much money there, if you look at it that way. But they still cost you 634 dollars a piece? They did, but we got good wear and tear out of the last two.
Bruce, do you have the breakdown of what one full-time EMT will cost for the year?
No, I don't.
Could you maybe bring that to the meeting? Because I'm kind of curious, when we start, you know, like what Taylor says, when you start adding up that extra money and what we're going to do with it? I'd like to see what the breakdown looks like and how many extra full-time or part-time EMTs we can hire with that additional money.
Sure, sure, I can do that. Cheryl, you and I can do that, can't we?
Sure.
Okay.
Should've said Cheryl, please get that for me.
Yeah.
I think that stuff's going to be important.
Yes, and I agree with you. But I'm, I, you know, extremely unworked background.
And that's the thing, I think, personally, I, you know, it's, it's hard to tell, basically, okay, you know, we're going to use it for this, we might use it for this, we might use it for that. And it, it doesn't seem like there's a clear message on how that money's going to get spent.
Right.
So I think it's very important that, that, that it's relayed to everybody that's going door to door on how that money's. So I think it's very important that, that, that it's relayed to everybody that's going door to door on how that money is spent. I mean, frankly, I would love a little bit more clarity myself.
And I agree, and I agree with you, and I, and I can't really give you that clarity yet. Hopefully Monday, I can get a little more clarity with you guys.
Well, I mean, it's your budget. You've got to be able to.
Oh, I've got to be able to stand behind everything I, I put on that print, and I will stand behind it.
Right, because I think you're going to get asked, you know, some very bold questions.
Sure.
That's what we're trying to find out tonight, you know, what that looks like and.
Yeah.
Having that much money set aside specifically for wages, I get nervous earmarking it just for wages, because if you have a fire truck that goes down and then earmarked all that money for wages.
We, and we can't touch it.
Exactly. I mean, I don't know how, I mean, basically, it was told to me that that's where the money's going to go, to wages. That is where the need is, for sure.
Yeah. And I'll have you, hopefully, I'll have an up-to-date number of what we spent already in wages, insurance, capital improvement with the truck and everything. I hope to have everything for you.
Yeah, I haven't looked at the budget yet, but I don't know if we're earmak, earmarking any money for like new fire trucks or anything like that.
Nope.
I was reading the paper, Defiance's got a new ladder truck. It was two million bucks.
Yeah.
It's not a ladder truck, it's an aerial truck. There's a difference.
Yeah, you correct.
No, I just was just sitting in on some of the conversations and heard all the explanation of how it's different and.
That's what the Crescent News report. About a half a million dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you can get all that information to, to that committee so that they can help you prepare a, a good statement to give that person you're standing there knocking on their door.
Right.
I think it's going to really be beneficial to, to getting this thing passed.
Yeah, and I agree, that's, you know, I, I don't want to have any, any clowns or anything over this.
Right, currently, there's a lot of gray area.
Yes, and I agree with Ron, there's nothing. It is what it is, and I can't.
Well, you get your meeting together with these guys, and they'll, they'll be more than happy to help you.
Sure, and I'm relying on you two to do that too, because you've had more dealings with EMS side than I have, money-wise, money-wise, so. So I'm going to put pressure back on you guys to help me and Cheryl. Anything else?
Okay, thanks, Bruce. Park director, Val, Gary.
Um, I really don't have much to say. We're just doing our homework down there.
Get your eyes?
Save some dollars, strand the heck out of them, babes.
Questions for Val, Gary? Cheryl?
Um, we have the fund status, and if you notice, the American Rescue Plan twenty-one fifty-two, um, I got the payment of nine hundred and one thousand dollars I was waiting for. I'm now sitting in there waiting to have the auditors come. And we've almost made up on your cash summary by fund, um, the revenue and expenses are almost even. And you have the Mary's report, which our part was eight hundred and thirty-six dollars for the month of August.
Can you elaborate on that, American Rescue Plan Fund? What is that money for?
That is for, um, it's for the well field and the water tower. Well, Phil got the one point oh three nine million.
Yeah.
And the seven hundred and ninety dollars for the water tower. So we have to pay our contractors and then get reimbursed.
So the well field has been paid, correct?
That's where the nine hundred and one came in. It was several payments. We were only able to start doing that just recently. They finally got the website going, and it's really easy now.
So will you be paying, so as there's, everybody, we've approved all those bills though, haven't we? Like Brian excavating on them, so this is already.
And we use our own money, right? And so now I have to change the account number so that that, it'll all come out of American Rescue instead of out of water and capital projects.
So that basically you're, you will be reallocating that?
Right, wherever it was spent from, we'll get recovered money.
Cory, I didn't have time to drive by the new tower. Did they get all the rest of the signage on and everything? So that's ready to start doing some excavating and that's already lined up, right? Is, anybody doing that?
No. I can't think of who's doing it. Cogo's going to be doing most of it, and AEP is doing the underground.
So when, when do you anticipate that going online?
Late November, early December.
What's the status on this one here?
It'll be sometime next, next year, hopefully spring. I don't really have a status for the next summer, next spring, next summer for it. I've been in contact with, uh, metal link for their antennas on it, get those off.
And the new Marx Tower will PD radios and, because the fire department still uses that antenna, correct?
Correct. There, I talked to the sheriff today, and he said they're about a month and a half of going online. He said, don't quote me, but he's looking for a month and a half to go online with the Marx system here and down.
And all of your radios will work on Marx also, so we don't have to buy new equipment?
Nope, I don't have to worry about it. It'll bounce off that tower right there.
Polls today, AEP was the backgrounds to get the overhead to that tower, but they got one pole and then they went through a water main with the second one, so they kind of have a setback.
Yeah.
I don't know when they'll start punching poles again, hopefully soon.
So meddling's the only thing that we've got to worry about on that tower then?
Did they pay to be out there?
Yeah, I don't know.
They gave us three hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Oh, so they could, out of kindness of your heart, you could leave them up there till next year with, with the.
They already installed a new tower or a new receiver on the elevator? So they're pretty much done?
They already moved, I think so.
So that's junk up there?
I think, I'm looking at Kent. Kent's not, has said yes also.
Well, I don't know if it's junk. I know they've installed their new.
Yeah, I know they're wanting to take a bounce.
Okay. Bouncing back to solicitor, but talk, always talk about tower.
Yeah, nothing new.
Nothing new.
I haven't heard anything since the last time we were here, no emails, so.
We had to, Cory did most of it, a survey, environmental study, right, for that, so that's a movement.
Environmental study for what?
For the new road. And, and one of the maps where the new access road would be, how we get to the tower.
New access for the tower.
Yeah, yes. And we took mainly a yes and no questionnaire, it's pretty simple.
Speaking of the solicitor, um, that's in your hands, so you, any idea when you might decide?
I have to work on that.
Will there be time enough that somebody can get acquainted with him and his process?
That's the plan. You were at the interview, so I'm good with you. Okay. Any other, I think we're asking Cheryl questions, right?
Yeah, I'm done. Okay, the only thing I have, I've had some people ask Halloween coming. Um, I'm going to make it the twenty-eighth of October, which is the Saturday before Halloween, which is the thirty-first of the twenty-eighth, and I don't know what the hours are.
When would you last that, four to six?
Four to six, we'll go without them, twenty eighth. Hicksville Trail, they're having a kind of a open house, right, Taylor, this Saturday?
Yeah.
You know the hours?
More of an informational meeting, that's eleven to one.
Eleven to one.
Just come find out more about it.
So that's coming up this Saturday.
I think there'll be some hot dogs and some water.
Who's drinking a van or a, or radio, radio out here?
Live music, yeah.
There's a board John out there, so.
There'll be, I think there's, there's going to be a couple extra, thanks to Mr. Graber.
That'd be a long line for just one.
There'll be, I think, three, I think is what they think.
Oh, okay. Is there going to be a band out there?
Uh.
Or a singer?
Uh, acoustic show, yes.
Okay. So put that on the calendar, eleven to one Saturday.
You know, people take their golf carts around the track instead of walking?
No more ride vehicles.
Or say anything else needs to come for this council?
Yeah. No, sir.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Rule call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Lucker?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
Massa?
Yes.